Okay, well, let's get started. Committee of all, agenda item number one, public works no removal agreement with MIT.
So basically, we've been providing this service for several years, and this is for our Main Street Fisher Avenue. So there is no increase in two years, however, we're still making a good revenue. And speaking with the engineering department, they recommend that we pass a resolution to sign the agreement as recommended. So it's the rate of 254.35%.
So what's 254.35% per centimeter of snow? What do you mean by that?
It's based on how many centimeters of snow you're getting. So in a year, if you have a higher snowfall, that has an impact. We have to only do the removal.
Yeah, well, what does that mean, though? Like, what is 2.? What does that mean by 2? How much is, how many centimetres, like, per?
Per dollar?
254.35% per centimeter of snow that falls as reported by Environment Canada.
And really?
Yep.
How much snow usually falls?
If you look for it.
In 2,000, we're talking.
Forty-two thousand last year.
It's been, yeah. So, and yes, that is as per Environment Canada this way. It's not any of us that are delving into that.
Oh, you're gonna divide.
I'm trying to figure out how many centimetres.
And we have, we're not, we're saying no increase for two years.
Yeah, they didn't recommend, we haven't had an increase in two years. So they've kept it the same. Depending on how we make out this year, we would maybe consider an increase for next time.
For next year, because it's a little too late for this year, but for next year, could we get a breakdown on what's included in the cost? What does it include? There you go.
Be interested to know what our margin is, on what our cost per hour or cost to remove that snow is.
Yeah.
Well, there's an expenditure here of $21,598.
Yeah, but what's in that?
It's winter maintenance of portions of the highway between Seventeenth and Cook, Fisher Avenue and La Rose, Fisher Avenue at home, Lapland Avenue from Third Street to Grace Lake Theater, and Grace Lake Road from Lapland Avenue to Faford. And that's basically when it's performed snow plowing operations in accordance with standards that they set, and also for removal of snow on our main route.
But on the expenditure side of things, could you give us a breakdown going forward of how much is equipment cost, how much is fuel, how much is labor? How much are we spending to provide this service?
Yeah.
Right? Because it doesn't say that.
Yeah, it just gives an overall, so you cover a breakdown.
Because, like, there are no increase, but we've had lots of increases, I'm sure.
Yeah. And are we proposing a one or two-year?
It's a one, every year.
One year? Okay. So then for next year, if we can get a much more accurate accounting of what we're spending to do this, how much time it takes, you know, the whole thing? You're being watched on, right?
Yeah, see, I shine the head there. You can just imagine the comments tomorrow.
So we'll move forward with that for this year as is, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, for this year.
Folks, everybody? Yeah? Okay. Uh, okay, here's one we can talk about for a bit. The propane boiler upgrade. Let's have a chat.
Which one is that?
That's the next one, right?
Yes, that's for the Civic Center and Fire Hall. So, Andre, you had asked a question, and it was, like, I'll just kind of go through this quickly. So the town reviewed several cost incentives. A study was done, and we had budgeted $175,000 for this propane boiler upgrade. This money is to come from gas tax reserve. We're recommending a resolution to approve the tender for the upgrade of the boiler system submitted by MAC Tower for the amount of $145,321,40 plus an additional cost of $25,000 for the system flush and asbestos abatement. So I've been asked the question about what kind of a return are we looking at? We should see an approximate 20% reduction, this is being conservative, in our billing with this upgrade. We use on average $26,071.71 per year on mild years, and as high as $46,000 a year in colder years. We should see a savings of approximately $5,000 per year in the mild years, and about $9,200 in the colder years. These are just simple theoretical calculation numbers that are used, the current usage shown to savings. One company had estimated a savings to be closer to $15,000 with a payback of 13 years. However, engineering was a bit skeptical because they didn't estimate of the current building envelope to come up with these savings. So this is a bit of a moving target, as rates in building can affect the payback greatly. We believe this is the best option for the upfront capital and operational maintenance costs.
Okay. So a couple of questions I had, and anybody can jump in at any time, right? So if we go with the existing propane boiler, right? That exempts us from any sort of Manitoba Hydro upgrades?
Manitoba Hydro was actually part of this whole efficiency program.
Okay, but the thing that I read from the consultant said that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be allowed to participate in the, what is it called here?
Geothermal?
No, no, no.
The car swamp.
The crinni. Yeah, okay, so potential upgrades that are eligible for additional Manitoba Hydro incentives include building envelope, including both insulation and window replacements through the commercial building envelope program. If the existing heating systems are converted to electric or geothermal, if the building remains completely on propane, it would be not, it would not be eligible for CBEP incentives. So in the event that there was a program to change the windows or to provide additional insulation, because we go with a propane boiler, we would be exempt from those programs.
But I thought the recommendation, though, in this, from that study, though, was to replace the propane boiler with an electric boiler.
Well, what I read was option C, Andre, and it was going with the, with the open loop or the well.
Because if you look at the, in that proposal, and again, I don't have all the details, but 100% electrical system option was the fastest payback and the cheapest project to do.
Okay. The one paragraph I got says, "Due to the results of the economic analysis and the unbalanced heating dominant load profile, option C, open well ground loop, is the recommended geothermal system type for this building type and location."
Yeah, if you were gonna do that, option C, but that one, that project cost $415,000.
Okay. Then 11-year payback.
Yeah.
And what about the?
The electric was 7.6 years' payback.
Okay, but they're recommending propane.
Yeah, well, that's where I was kind of confused, that's.
It was, sorry, and I can add by what he's got in the, "It's submitted bids provided different source options, however, recommendations unilaterally were to stick with propane as the primary heat source, as the company spelled it would be the most economical solution, taking into account our location, ability for repair, install, and cost of operation." That is why they chose that.
I would guess that the electric is cheap, is easier to maintain, and simpler.
And the price of propane is.
So it's gonna continue to rise, plus you have the carbon tax issue that's gonna come along with that.
But didn't Sam say something, if we were to change up to electric, the whole electrical system, it would change?
But they put that in here, too, though. That was part of the upgrade.
The boiler would be $100,000, and then upgrading $75,000 to upgrade.
The electrical services?
That's in this, that's not a hard quote to run.
And, like, I'll throw another wrench in this, like, 170-whatever-thousand or more, depending on the option, is, who selected that this would be, like, the project we would even pick? Like, there's, I don't know, like, if I was gonna come up with a list of things of priorities right now, being new, I don't know if I'd be picking the boiler at the town offices, being 178 grand I'd wanna be spending right away. I mean, a great cost savings over, in 11 years, I mean, great, but I mean, between all of the other issues, I don't know.
I'm sure, Chad, you can echo in what I'm saying, is, this was kind of a mandate. We had someone that was very adamant on taking advantage of all the hydro programs. We did the plug-ins, we did the lighting system, and we did express some concern about that right now, or at the time, and we were told to move forward with doing this study and looking at changeover. Am I incorrect?
Yeah, no, it's not incorrect at all. And the thing about this is, we're using gas tax money, right? Like, this isn't money that's coming out of the taxpayers' pockets. It's not coming out of the, the general revenues, coming from tax dollars. But what it is gonna do is, is it's gonna save the general taxpayer money, year, every year, that we're seeing cost savings on, on heating costs here.
For sure, but you can use the gas tax money for many different things.
A number, yeah, a number of different things.
That's what I'm saying, I just kind of wondered where, like, it'd be nice to have a list there if it said that, you know, like, to compare it to, say, the arena, and some of the upgrades could be done there, or some of the other areas where we could, like, why, I'm just kind of curious as to why, let's pick the Civic Center, we'll, like, why did they pick that one first? I would, I'm surprised, I guess.
I think part of it might have been because there was an actual grant through, through Manitoba Hydro that would permit us to do that study, and that's where it was, like, it didn't cost money, or it cost a minimal amount of money compared to what it could have, right? And again, this was a mandate by someone that was quite educated in utilizing the grants and had staff moving on it.
So it may not necessarily be the place that we should be spending 178 or anymore, really. I don't know, I'm just.
Based on sustainability, this was outlined in the report as the best bang for our buck in terms of upgrading through the program to bring us in line going down the future. The boiler that we're using now is.
But compared to what else in the town is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, no, no, I know what you're saying, but just in, in the spec of the report that was commissioned and done through the hydro grant program, you know, this is what was indicated as, as the best bang for our buck in terms of saving energy prices, so.
Are we spending much on maintenance right now?
I don't think we really are, it's just the inefficiencies is more of what it is.
It's a 40% efficient boiler.
Yeah, and that's, that's where we're at.
Electric is 100% efficient.
And that's what it pretty much is, is energy efficiencies.
I guess I would like to, if we, you know, I don't disagree with Trevor, but I would like to get a lot of more detail from Sam and Chris on, because I guess I think, when I read this, they're recommending an electric boiler. Unless I'm missing something, and again, I didn't spend hours and invest a ton of time in this as those guys did, so, you know, maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, and I would go even further and say, maybe there's something that, a piece of equipment that they can use that would go under the gas tax to do, I don't know, for road repair, and I don't, you know, and there were, all of a sudden, our, the energy efficiency, we're not necessarily, oh, we can really buy that piece, and we'll, we'll fix this and fix that. That's, I mean, if it's just because we happened to, someone was good at writing grants, and that's the one they filled out, and not happen to be the one, and everything, just, then all, all of a sudden, we're here with a decision to make, you know?
So I, I don't think it would be wrong for us to defer this at this time, because basically, we haven't even established our own priorities for 2019, so we're sort of inheriting one. And if we're not spending a lot of money on maintenance at this time, then we're probably good for another few months while we work this out.
Yeah, for sure.
We can bring it back in for December, budget it for this year, and we can have them attend and speak on it.
Yeah, so we'll defer this for the time being, and we'll bring it back as we get closer to budget. Makes sense? Okay. Okay, one, three, walking path closure process.
So basically, we've had residents that live along some of the walking paths that have brought forth concerns regarding graffiti, vandalism, theft, lots of things that go with a popular area and a path being in between. So, council of the day, we established a policy, and it was basically how to deal with some of these issues. We had the people come forward, a group of residents, and ask the town to change the policy on the closures. In speaking with Sam and Chris, they, or Sam, he recommends that staff, that we review the request following the November 30th vote by the residents. There's a voting system in place on the percentage that is required for the actual closure, and he's saying, can we just hold off until after that to see if it's effective or not?
Again, this is another issue that we've inherited.
Yeah.
A process has been started, let's let it play out, and then let's see where we are. I didn't even realize there was a mail-out in the works. Did you get one, Andre?
No.
No?
What did I see in here?
It'll only be certain.
To the people affected.
Hundred meters, is what it was?
I think that would.
Yeah, it would definitely be.
And Chad.
Okay.
But I guess, just from what I understand, and just for you guys' information, I know it might be a potential conflict, so I'll just state what the concerns of the others are, is that having a, having to make it mandatory that every resident actually sends in a vote of support, and if you don't vote, it's still counted as a percentage, because you, you can more or less say, it'll never, nobody will ever do that. You know, just in the logistics of saying, every single person that lives in this thing has to return a vote, and if they don't, they're considered still as the numbers in the overall vote, is not, not realistic. Not, not in today's age, especially when it has to be handwritten or, or done by mail. So, I don't think that's the concern that, that the people have with that.
So again, the previous councilants have started a process, we can make our own decisions, but we should allow it to go through at this time, just to do what they're doing, and then we'll bring it back. Okay? Lagoon!
Yay, this is a positive one. So as per previous discussion at the November 19th meeting, this is a request for a resolution to proceed with the lagoon upgrade.
The study, right?
Yeah.
The study for whatever.
Well, to move on to the next phase, yes.
What is the next phase?
It's basically, like, we have the study that says what the recommendations are, now we're gonna tell Water Services Board, okay, we're ready to move this, now we're gonna be looking at your funding, we need to get this all rolling. So it's letting them know, we're on our radar here, we need this, this is a priority. We never submitted that resolution before.
And finally, it's designed.
I'm still struggling with the, the need, to be honest with you. You know, when I look at the total phosphorus, which is what's impacting us, you know, if you look at that J.R. Cousins, or whatever the heck his name is.
Yeah, J.R. Cousins.
If you look at the report, you have total phosphorus on the influence that, you know, at a maximum of 2.96, and just the treatment that we're doing today gets it to 1.35. So considering that our lagoon is 40% full of sludge, and, and looking at the numbers from the, again, they were all the numbers, and I see Chris just sent them, but, looking at the numbers, it's only in the wintertime where you were exceeding the, the one, the one milligram per liter, you know, is it, is it the, is it the right thing to do right now, or, you know, are we looking at, should we, I don't know, I'm just not comfortable with saying that that's the, that that's the solution right now, to have that great big lagoon upgraded.
So what would you do? You guys are in this business, what would you do?
We'd de-sledge first, right?
Well, I mean, what I would do, honestly, if in my business, I would get another consultant to look at it, to say, I need a second opinion.
If I may, what if we chose to have someone from Water Services Board participate in a conference call with us, and just go through it with us?
I wanna, I would, I think we need a treatment expert to say, we've got a lagoon that has 40% water, 40% sludge, we failed the test in the wintertime, we're good every other time. From what I understand, I talked to our environmental engineer, from what I understand, because she sat through some of the, the public consultations, and most of the municipalities that were in trouble were in the twos and threes, not, not where we were, and she was surprised that we would be doing. And again, and then I just looked at this sheet here, like, I mean, if you look at the numbers, it shows, shows it down, and then Sam just sent me, again, I, I didn't see, I can't open up this thing, but, you know, looking at it, you know, through the last, this year, they're higher, but are we testing enough? Like, are we, do we, do we have enough data to, to say that's what we have to do? And if, if we're only going after phosphorus because everything else is there, what's the cheapest way to deal with phosphorus? Because everything else is well within, well within range.
Doesn't seem, it's kind of talked about recently, right? But it's not a past thing yet, it's just coming down the tube from the beginning.
Well, when it comes down the tube, then let's deal with it then.
How do you treat phosphorus? Like, I don't know, sorry.
Alan? Or that floating mat?
Floating mat.
The floating cattail mat, you just throw it out there, you actually, I guess what it does is just floats around in the summertime, you pull it in, you mow it, send it out again? Because that's the same thing in our, in our, you don't want the cattails to die, because they suck up the phosphorus, and when they die in the winter, they'll fall into the water, and then you'll, and then put the phosphorus back into the lake.
When you inject, you do your injection, and when it does it, it settles out all your stuff into the bottom again. So if we dredge it now and in.
I think it would be a pretty easy.
Three to five years.
Email to a, to a treatment consultant that says, listen, we got this lagoon, it's this size, this is our numbers that we got today, this is how much sludge we believe we have in there, what do you think?
It wouldn't hurt.
And it's not, it shouldn't cost us a ton of money, and it, I think it's up for our due diligence. I mean, for me, I would not be comfortable saying we need to spend that much money right now, but again.
So would we send out, like, the report that Cousins has come up with and send it out to another consulting firm?
No, you asked another consulting firm, like, you go up to a sewage specialist, and have them do up their report, and then compare it to.
So duplicate the work that Cousins has already.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't design the system, Chad, I would say, you know, the details that are in there, that's a 150-page report, but I would say, hey, we've got, you know, this size lagoon, we have this, we don't need them to come and do the survey, we know how much sludge is in there, give them the technical data, and tell them to analyze it, and give us what do you thinks?
Okay. Yeah, so I mean.
You know, like I said, it shouldn't take years to do this, it don't, doesn't need any site visits, he doesn't.
But I guess, and I think that's a good suggestion, but up to this point, I found it kind of hard to believe that nobody would have, and maybe it's, you know, that they've never said, hey, we, what can we do? Like, I know it was quite a few years ago, but they said, no, you can't do any more of your aerators, you can't do this, you're kind of reached capacity as to, to what other things that you can do. So, I mean, that was 10, 12 years ago, so in 12 years, like, nobody has asked those questions? I don't, I'm not saying don't, don't do it, I'm just.
Well, maybe they have, maybe they have, Trevor, but what I'm saying is, I don't understand it.
Yeah.
And I'm not an expert at that either, and, but, you know, I look at, I did spin through the report and looked at a few things, and I've asked a few of our experts, and there's sounded alarm bells going off, but again, that was just a, a over-the-coffee-table lunchroom discussion.
So would they need to come up for a visit on here, or just take our data and have a look at it?
Yeah.
Why don't we do that? It's a $15 million project, why don't we just, let's get another opinion?
Can we just, then can we recommend a resolution to go to our next meeting to get that?
Yeah.
Just because it's expanding stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Why not?
Because there's seven, there's, well, the lagoon was built in 1975, I think it was de-sledge once, since.
At least once.
And when they fixed up the aeration system in 80-something or whatever, so you've got seven feet of sludge.
Yeah.
So if, and in that sludge, it carries all your chemicals and everything else, and whatever, so if you remove that out, also too, though, what's gonna happen is you're gonna increase the capacity of your lagoon by that much.
Yeah, but it's gonna make your bugs more active, and like I said, if the wintertime is when you're having the problems, maybe you figure out how to put some heat in there, or what? Like, there's other things you can do. But Trevor might be right, they might, all these questions may be an aspiration.
No, I know, I mean, I know there was one issue on where they're testing. I mean, they were arguing.
While they were testing, they were testing.
Yeah, they were, they're, no, it's too soon, you're not doing it now, no, this is where they do it, and then they would change the, the chemical.
The parameters of the chemical.
Yeah, they would say, well, no, now this is the one we're looking for, there would be a, a chemical of the, of the month, you're high on this one now. Yeah, it would be, yeah, so, I don't know, but no, I think that's a good idea, there's nothing, you know?
Doesn't hurt damage.
Nope.
So we'll be bringing forward a resolution?
Yep.
For a second opinion.
Good. Public safety, nothing on there. Planning and development, CDC, there's a couple of, there's two letters about board appointments, so you guys had a chance to look at them?
So we had Danny Hope and a Bill Katick that are all over on the board, and they've requested us to appoint Jerome Conady and Chris Cook in their place, so we would require a resolution applying to those members.
And just so I understand, kind of the, the process or whatever, obviously, we kind of do the rubber stamp, so have they already been at a meeting, a CDC meeting, and kind of?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like there's been some housekeeping shortcomings, and so this will address some of that.
Oh, okay.
Between now and the next council meeting, I intend to have a discussion with the chief about some of these things. I have a few reservations about, about the appointment of someone from PBDC at this point in time, simply because this organization is funded by the taxpayers of the Town of the Park and the arm of Kelsey, and I would really feel much more comfortable if the OCN was to contribute a little bit of money to this, because it does steer the economic direction of our community. And it's not that I'm saying I'm trying to exclude OCN, but I have this thing about those that pay should play. So I intend to have a discussion with the chief about this before the next council meeting. We were gonna try to meet today, but we were too busy.
They may have never, ever been asked.
And that's with fairness, I know I talked to the Reeve today about it, and he said the same thing you did, perhaps they've never been asked.
So are they looking for that particular individual because they're from PBDC, or is it, yeah?
Yes. Okay.
So we're okay with that resolution?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Kelsey Planning District, this is a big one.
I'm still not reading this, but this is basically giving you information.
It took me that long to write it, and you're not reading it?
You did an amazing job.
It was just background information.
Yeah, so it's background information, we have the open house coming up with, like, a meeting, and they're gonna give you a lowdown. You've been looking at it, the planning district is a very positive thing for our community.
Yeah.
That's it?
So I had coffee with the Reeve today, because I was trying to get a handle on this, because I don't really completely understand it yet, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, but this sounds like a fairly big deal.
It is.
But I, not that I pay attention to everything the paper and the radio produces, but I don't remember reading anything about this. And this will have a significant impact on our two communities going forward in how we grow and develop. And not that I want to be excluded from it, but this is a big change, this is a real big change.
It's meshing, as a community, what's best to go where? Like, right now, like, what would be the best option? If someone were to come and knock on our door, where are we gonna send them? Looking at the best place for them. Looking at the best place for them to be. And Jen, you pretty much have been running all of this, like, with the boards. So this is basically, we're saying on the fifth, there's a meeting at six PM and have at least one member of council attend the open house on the sixth. This is a good opportunity. I would recommend, please try and make sure you can attend this meeting with them because it's, it's leaps and bounds.
Yeah. It's a big deal, guys, and everybody should try to attend.
I was talking before and I'm still on it.
Yeah. It's a, it's a big deal.
And where's the meeting?
Here.
It's here?
Is it here at the R?
It's here. It's going to be up in the KRC.
Oh, okay.
I'll be, I'll be here.
So that, right now, this is just a notice?
Yeah, it's telling you what's going on.
For the meeting on the fifth.
Yeah.
And then whoever can attend the sixth open house.
Okay, good. Okidoki. The Pau Community Renewal Corp Santa Claus parade request.
So under my authority, we have a policy that will enable me to approve parades based on two routes that we've, we've chosen. And for this year or for this particular parade, they always choose to include OCN, including the bridge and stuff. So we're saying, you know what, this doesn't fall under our policy, they'd have to go to everybody else, let's approve what they have in town and ensure that they have a lead and tail car. Um, and they have to get the approval from the other authorities. This normally wouldn't come onto your table, but again, because it's beyond the ones that we've approved, that's why it's here. No.
The, uh, you can't, um, you can't legislate common sense. Right? But I want to just mention, do we have anything in place that would prevent a four-year-old from falling afloat?
Any guidelines, search quotes? That just happens.
That just happened. And I do not want that happening here. So, uh, how do we ensure to the best of our ability that a four-year-old child is not going to run up to a float and get run over? What do we do?
You know what a good idea would be? And the guys are kind of going home there and they're at the schools more than ever before. What if you got some of the fire department to go around each float, kind of hand out a little sheet and kind of have talk to everybody to say, hey, you know, just watch out and kind of go over some.
Kind of maybe have them at the beginning of the parade and hunt them down.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then just go by to each float and do it.
Could we have the fire department walk the floats?
They do.
Do they stay, they stay?
They do, but they used to stay in their own kind of area.
Could they walk alongside the floats?
Sure.
As a security.
Even maybe what about the local junior team?
Sure.
Doing the same thing. They can just split up and they're easily seen. They don't have to work all together.
Yeah.
And can we request some sort of a speed limit? Right, five kilometers an hour or?
Have you, I'm sure you have driven in one of those parades. It's very stressful by the time you're at the end of it.
I know.
And it is because there's kids running out.
Sure is.
Honestly.
And not everybody drives at the same speed. Sometimes somebody speeds up, somebody slows down.
Got to get done.
Yeah.
It's tough to do. Candy. More candy I got, love.
So, okay, so everybody, we're okay with these recommendations?
Yeah.
Right?
As a condition.
Cause I, I don't want to hear.
Participants be advised at five kilometers and then we'll ask the fire department if they'll.
And, and the blizzard, that's a great idea. Yeah, that's a great idea.
But we're approving that?
Yeah. Uh, okay, utility deficit recovery. Graham, you're up. Oh, wait, he's not here.
So initially, when we were looking at this, we were trying to move around how we should do it as a tax levy as a last resort. This is for a 2017 deficit. So what we were wanting is just a resolution to charge a 2017 deficit to utility working capital surplus. It's money we have, it doesn't cost the taxpayers.
So this becomes a bookkeeping entry basically?
Yeah. And again, it's to make sure that you're not digging the pears. We have the money, so.
And how much is the deficit?
Hundred and forty-eight, four seventy-two.
And this is hundred and thirty-one years ago.
Trust me, every time we do something different, they come back and tell us, nope, you got to do this way.
Interim operating budget.
It's under the municipal act. A resolution must be passed to pay expenses until such time as the budget is passed. So we are requiring a resolution to carry us through until budget time in the amount of eleven, five, seventy-six, four, twenty-one. This is something you do every year.
Okay. And, uh, any questions you guys have?
That's in accordance with the municipal act. It's just to make sure that you have the authority to spend any kind of money.
Uh, interim organizational guideline. Here we go. Issue sheet. Okay, these are our meetings.
So we have, we can probably look at doing both of them at the same time and the procedures. I have had, I think everybody has had a request from one of the counselors stating they wanted to be here. I'm wondering if it would be best if we could have a separate meeting specific to this and maybe deal with a little bit of the strategic plan, what you guys want to see going forward. I sent you just a quick little document earlier and I think, why not get on this?
So we'll have a committee meeting then?
I think we need to. And it's very separate to this.
Separate.
Okay. When do you want to look at holding that?
Got nothing else going on.
Keeping in mind that I'm away for a bit.
What are we doing next Monday night, December third?
What is third? Something is on the.
There is something that evening.
There's lunch.
I'm not here, but it doesn't matter.
There's that lunch thing with.
Oh, yeah, it's at lunch.
Yeah.
Okay, well, how about six o'clock on Monday?
Can we get five?
Five o'clock on Monday? Everybody make five?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay, five o'clock.
Third at five. Also with that document that I sent you, basically what I'd done was, as, at our first meeting, we talked about things that were kind of a priority in, in each member's minds. So I've listed them. So what I'll probably do is just send out an email to everybody with that and ask that you would come prepared, if that's okay? With pointing out your top five out of that list. And then we can kind of start at least a little bit.
Okay. So the aviation fuel, here we go. So I had asked some questions and they've gotten us some answers. So. Everybody read it? In the new year, I would like to have a look at that Wasco agreement a little more closely.
Yeah.
I'm not really all that pumped by it.
Pretty loaded on their side.
Very much so. I don't have confidence in the numbers we were provided. That is the most profitable gas station facility in Manitoba, in my opinion. Everybody else squeaks off five to 10 cents a liter, but we double our money and I'm goddamn defied to know how we do it. So I, I, I have issues with that, but I guess we do need to get our staff trained. It appears that the airport manager that we have an agreement with is incapable of training them, so we have to go outside the agreement. So.
Sixteen or thirty-four?
Uh, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. For the cost.
Oh, that's sixteen-five.
Now, did they, they sign a service agreement on this or what do we do? With the, the staff that's out there? Okay, you got Keith Goops, uh, Dennis LeJam, they call these guys?
Yeah, what they're going to do is this firm is going to come out, train them on how to do the testing on the field. Yeah.
So is there, none of them going to retire in the next year?
There was a possibility for some of them to retire 10 years ago.
I know.
We, we just don't know.
I don't, I don't, it's just, it just seems like we're going to train these guys and in six months or a year, we're going to be doing it all over again.
I agree. It's the way it is.
I know, but it's just like, like the younger guys that are there, uh, they're probably there for a few years, but like, well, four of the staff there are almost seventy.
Yeah. So we have a fuel tank at the town garage, right? And that's our tank. Who's in charge of that? The, like, who's, who's, whose tank is that?
That's ours.
Okay. So is that Sam's responsibility?
Yeah.
So why don't we train Sam in being a train the trainer?
We can probably do that. The only difference is, the only reason we don't have this requirement at ours is because we don't sell fuel. This is the only reason that we have the problem and having to train guys is because we are selling it secondary.
Yeah, but it's also aviation fuel.
Yeah.
As compared to diesel or gas.
Well, what I'm hearing you say is maybe if we could get someone that could be trained up enough to.
Train our people?
Yeah, train the trainer. Yeah.
Because if we train these people and they retire in the spring, we're back right there because that's sixteen thousand a year.
And I mean, are all these guys like that are, are they set specific aviation fuel trained, like with an aviation background? I mean, we get the bulk fuel sta, fuel station there, they must test their fuel, must be someone from each, like, I don't know, somebody you think in town that would be trained to test fuel.
See, and again, the only reason that we have such a specific requirement.
They said if he would have their own person, they said if he would have their own person because they fuel their own. And the province has their own person.
Or do they?
So I'm definitely asking, we do a train the trainer?
It's just a thought.
So in the meantime?
Yeah, I, I don't agree with their position and their wording because when, everything that I read said recommended, it doesn't say shall, right? It, it doesn't say must, it says recommend.
Yeah.
That's a big difference, right? But in the meantime, it sounds like we have staff that aren't trained that are filling airplanes. Well, that doesn't sound very good, right? They've been doing it for 20 years, so I would have thought by now, given that this staff has been there for most of the 20 years, that they'd have been trained by them.
Well, they were. They, they have been trained. Supposedly, according to Sam, or whatever, in the old system of the jar testing or whatever. Cause I, I know when, uh, Dwayne Holland was out there, he, uh, what's his name, Dean Corvart, showed him how to do the testing.
I begrudgingly agree, but we need to train the trainer.
Yeah. Or somehow, see what we can do.
Okay.
Resolution to approve it.
The tenders.
Yeah, but we also need to be looking at, is there a way that we can have one guy that would, what do we get out of this? Can we each train the next guy coming in?
Uh, four, seven, resolution of support for coroner's inquest. Uh, I asked this to be put on because Debbie, Mrs. Leeper, she contacted me one day and she, she, uh, it's a very sad situation and, uh, it sounds like they're meeting some roadblocks and getting this resolved. So they are asking for a letter of support from us in a coroner's inquest. And, uh, the young fellow that died was a member of our community. Born and raised here, is my understanding. He lived in town for many years and out of the lake. The railroad starts here in the Pau and they have safety concerns about other residents of our community going forward. So, uh, she's seeking a letter of support. Nothing more, doesn't cost us anything, just saying that we'd like to know what happened.
Just for the record, we've never been approached with anything like this. There's no historical, anything, yeah.
It's a first. Thankfully, this is a first.
And it may not be a last. I don't know, I don't know. Again, I'm very empathetic to the family. This is a horrible situation. I'm leaving this a hundred percent up to what council recommends.
Any discussion, folks? I'm not in the shoes of that. No.
Bring it forward.
Okay. Uh, okay, four point eight, health and safety committee. I had had a discussion with Kerry about this one. Andre, you'll be well versed in this. I remember the last time I was on council, this was beat into our heads pretty seriously. But mayor and council is where the buck stops for safety company. Right now, there is a safety committee represented by staff and the unionized workforce, but since we are ultimately responsible, uh, my question was, why don't we have a voice or a seat at the table on the safety committee? Because you are personally legally liable.
We are the employer.
We are the employer.
Actually, the mayor is actually there. Yeah. So just so that I'm, it has to get through a few people before it gets to us.
Who's out?
Yeah, exactly. But I'll have my butt covered, no matter what.
So that's, that's, that's why that's there, because I really feel that, uh, we need, anytime that we are person, and I'm saying personally exposed, I like to have something put into when I'm personally exposed to anything.
So this would be clear?
Yeah.
We have insurance that covers us or?
Oh, yeah. With any decisions council makes, we have insurance.
But it doesn't cover you if you act in negligent behavior.
Okay.
It doesn't cover you. So in the event that, um, you, you turn something down that you should have approved and somebody gets hurt, you are responsible.
Personally.
Personally.
Does the, um, does the, uh, committee bring forward recommendations to council when they have improvements that are required from safety?
Yeah, your committee though mostly deals with a lot of it internal.
If they can't deal with it through the committee.
Basically, what they do is they meet, they'll go through facilities, they'll identify issues, they'll work on those issues or just day-to-day operational issues that, you know, that we're having problems with. But if it's something that's going to be of any significant, significant value or anything, it definitely would have to come to the table.
So right now, who's represents, who's on the safety committee? Think of the manager and the employees.
Couple managers and, or, Chris, Amber and Kerry and then I believe it's Ryan. I don't know, Water Tribune, yeah. Water Tribune.
And then what, do they go around to different facilities at different times of the month or just to kind of?
Yeah, they have their scheduled.
Their routine scheduled meetings.
And in minutes, are they making, just coming to council?
No, they don't come to council.
They get sent to health and safety. No, and you're right. It, it is, it's, it's sent to the province, I agree.
Yeah, we're sent to the province.
Yeah, there should be, there should be, uh, a thing that may have sent.
We can definitely get that.
The other thing is, what happens if Burt Lynn Pitt comes into town and the boys are doing a manhole thing and he shuts them down right there in the spot?
It's happened, yeah.
Yeah, do we deal with Burt or?
We deal with them.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we usually let you know what's going on.
Yeah.
Bert is no longer.
He retired.
I know.
No, he's back.
Finally retired.
He's back.
We have a Brian Campbell that's actually the... Is he back?
Yeah, I got an email from him last week, saying...
Geez, he doesn't tell us.
That's what he said, I'm back.
Really?
That was an email?
Yeah, we just went through this, Brian, well, he didn't last long in there.
Well, Brian's still there.
Yeah.
Thought he was retired.
Yeah. That was very quick. So in the same, I want anybody to want to sit on this.
I'll, I'll sit on the health, it's a good thing. Kind of have a little bit of experience with that.
Perfect. We'll do a resolution.
Resolution, yeah.
Uh, cool, letter of support from Hockey Hall of Fame.
This is actually dealing with a conversation about what are we gonna be doing moving forward with letters of support? We get them regularly. In the past, it was kind of a well-known thing where if we don't spend money, and if it's not gonna tie us into money, there's nothing wrong with writing a letter, a letter of support and having the mayor sign off on it. But this is a whole new council, it's up to you, the way you wanna proceed.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. So if we get, um, a letter of support from somebody, if there's no financial implication to it, can we just, uh, send up the letter? Can we just say, yeah, it's good, send up the letter?
Cut and paste your name.
Cut and...
That's what we did, that's what we did in the past.
I'll come inside.
So as long as there's no financial obligation?
Yeah.
Or no political whatever?
Well, that'll be one where we'll have to read our way through.
Yeah, because I know when it's an affiliation with a certain political party and stuff, it's like, I'm not getting in the middle of this.
Well, if every, we are in the Town of the Paw, we're an elected bunch of politicians, everything we do is political.
No, sorry, not like more NDP or Conservative or whatever, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay, so guys are good with that?
So there is also, you'd ask to bring up the book of seniors' Christmas party letter of support with that following this?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Maybe we could, like, unless it's splitting hairs, but if there is stuff that comes up, like I know before, we never even knew about it coming up, if there is a way, even if you could do it in your CIO report, saying what's, what's been signed, or what...
Oh, absolutely. Let's face it, it's an email, what we can do is just send an email, because we're sending it out to someone anyway.
Sure, yeah.
No, 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 I agree. Just copy everyone.
So once the letter's done?
Yeah.
We send it out, copy it to everyone?
But just give.
Yeah, so you know what you're doing, I get it.
Absolutely, I get it.
Okay, no problem.
I don't want, everybody to kind of get some seniors' Christmas party.
No, 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 I, I, it's just sometimes there may be, uh, there may be a time factor, right?
Yeah, whereas I think it can be signed off.
Well, yeah, we have no problem, we can send it to everybody, just so everybody knows.
Uh, Christmas Eve hours, Christmas was canceled, I got the memo, it's...
It's canceled.
Yeah.
Because Bert's back.
This is our bill, is the one who told me.
So in the past, this is not a part of the collective agreement. In the past, council has passed a resolution which would permit staff, or the offices or the town facilities, to, with the exception of our CMP, because they were in essential service, to close at noon on the day of Christmas Eve. Keep in mind, that is not a stat holiday in our collective agreement, that is basically, how do I sustain, it's a gift, really, is what I would consider it, from council. This costs us about five hundred, or fifty-five hundred dollars. Is council in favor of that, or...
It doesn't cost you additional money, it's just the wages that you would have paid.
The wages, you would have paid, correct.
Lose those nine hours.
I agree with it.
I'm fine with it. So if they're given, if they're...
That's what we do.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with it.
If they're off at noon, and, uh, is there a way we can do emergency services if they help in?
Okay.
It would be no different than anything else.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it would, it would be, it would be a call-in like anything else, but if you don't have someone to come in...
But if they're, if they're on a call-in coming in, are they, uh, swan point wanted, or two?
We can't make them come in as the...
No, but I mean, I, I, I think you have to have an agreement where, yeah, that's your plan, that you were done at noon on the day, but if something's happening out there, and we need guys, you kind of gotta stay.
Yeah.
That's not how they work, so they would rather...
The only reason I... They're usually gone on a dodge.
Yeah, no, but they, no, but if something's going on, like, I mean, I mean, there has to be a little bit, typically, I mean, that's how it works with our guys, too, I mean...
Do you see that working with our guys?
I think we need to have, uh, Bill's contracting out guys ready to go, what'd you call them?
Well, with me...
Standing offers.
Standing offers, there you go.
Well, sadly, if we can't call people back and it's an emergency, and they won't come back, we have no choice.
And I, I think that's something to go work on, is for standing, you've never had them, any standing offers, things? And all it is, is just a letter you send out to all the contractors in town?
We've done that once before.
And they, and they tell you what equipment they have, what their hourly rate is.
Partner EMO plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're covered under WOCB or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what happens if we had a major water break three o'clock Christmas Eve? Is it running until the twenty-seventh?
If no one coming in? If no one comes in, yeah.
Oh, God, so what if the water treatment plant went down?
Those guys are a different service, someone has to be on all the time.
But the water break is so bad that it drains the tank, like, we were told it could happen in four hours.
Then they would come in, but...
And it would be the same as what we do any other time, if it needs to be dealt with, and there's no one here and no one coming in, we'd have no choice but to contract out. What else could you do?
Yeah, I'm working hard on it.
Because that's, we can't force people to come in, is the sad part.
We're not working.
Yeah. That's right.
But you, you could say that everybody works a full day and let everybody go home early that day. If we were worried about coverage for four hours, I wouldn't do that, but...
No, it's, it's just in the event that something does happen, like...
I think, we have to have faith that the guys will come.
The other thing is, um, it's been a past precedence for the last, I'm sure, fifty years here. If you're taking that whole day off, the town doesn't compensate the afternoon, you have to take your whole day on vacation.
Yeah, that's the same as any other...
So a resolution to...